Good evening, everybody. It's January 28th and I'd like to welcome you to the Rhinebeck Town Board meeting. Would everybody please stand for the motion. The Pledge of Allegiance to the Father, the United States of America. To the Republic, the Constitution, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like a motion to approve our prior minutes of January 2nd for our organizational meeting, January 2nd for our special town board meeting, and January 10th for our special town board meeting. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Chauncey. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alan. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. I have an announcement that on January 25th, I received a letter from the Duchess County Legislative Clerk, letting us know that Joel Tyner had resigned as county legislator, and that we will need to work with the town of Clinton in order to name his successor. We have 20 days to call a meeting and appoint somebody. The 20 days started when we got this letter, so that is the 14th. So I'm saying that we should have a meeting by the 11th, which is a Friday, to give ourselves some margin of error. I'd like to set a meeting date tonight and come up with some additional nights. I haven't been able to get supervisor Ray Overly from Clinton, but my intention is to convene a meeting. I will be presiding over it as we're the most populous town. We have sent out calls for resumes and cover letters of people who are Rhinebeck or Clinton residents who are interested in serving in the county legislature. I have four applications or emails so far. I forwarded them to the clerk of Clinton, all of you, and supervisor of Clinton. Does anybody have anything to say or any questions?
I guess only one question, Elizabeth. I assume we'll be meeting with the Clinton Board? And the appointment is only till the end of this year.
Yeah, through the 31st or the 1st of January. And then the person who's appointed would be able to run in the election.
In November of 19.
What is your availability like next week? Here's what I'd like to propose.
Only things that are bad for me are Tuesday evening and then Thursday and Thursday. Other than that, I'm wide open.
I'd like to propose Wednesday, the 6th. At 6:00 PM, please.
I'm sorry, 6:00 PM?
Yep. And I'd like to propose Monday, the 11th, which is our regular town board meeting at 6:00. And we can do it then as well.
I think that's smart. That way, it's good to have two days.
Friday is a possible day as well, the 8th, if anyone.
I'm good, too.
Please hold all three. The 8th, let's hold at 6:00 PM as well. I will send you all out a notice once I speak to Ray Overly. We could have two meetings. We could do one the 6th and the 11th. But what I am assuming we will do is forward all applications. We could go into executive session to discuss. It is an appointment of a person. The medical, financial, credit, or employment history of particular person or corporation or matters leading to the appointment. Employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation.
You don't have to talk to them if you don't choose.
I'm sorry?
You don't have to talk to Bob Freeman if you don't choose to.
What's your -- can you speak to the microphone?
I'll talk after.
Well, if you have an objection, I'm curious. It says that we're allowed to go into executive session to discuss the appointment of a particular person.
No, it does.
And you're saying that we're not.
It's the effective position, and almost things have changed. Bobby said that.
I will confirm with Bob Freeman. I've spoken to him in the past. We have appointed someone to -- in a seat here, and we've been allowed to go into executive session. It's an appointment of a person to a position. I can't continue to speak if you're not very close to the microphone, as nobody can hear. It's a one-way conversation.
Elizabeth, at any of these meetings or --
And Thursday?
But definitely. How -- what would be interviewing the candidates, do you think?
Would we want to do that?
I would think that we would not. Do you have a suggestion? I don't necessarily want to interview people in whom I'm not interested. I would indicate.
What would you do, first cut, I suppose? And yeah, if we have a short list, that would be an approach. I would not have a problem with that.
And let the Clinton Board meet with whomever they'd like to meet with? The votes are weighted by population. We each have a vote that is 12.73. Can you guys, can we have one comment?
I'm sorry. I just confirm, yes, excuse me, I'm observing the dates.
Do you need to reconfirm them?
Yes, can you reconfirm them for me?
We're holding Wednesday, the 6th, Friday, the 8th, and Monday, the 11th at 6:00 PM.
Thank you. Got it.
There are 10 votes. They're weighted by population. We each carry a vote that's 12.73. And the Clinton Board carries a vote that's -- I have it right here, I'm sorry. 7.27. We have 63.66 percent. They have 36.34 percent.
It's weighted by population. As of the 2010 census, I assume.
I've sent out the letter to everybody, and it's posted with all the requests. I can't find it that quickly. The population of the district is based upon the population at the time of the reapportionment which establishes the current district. District 11 of the county legislature contains the town of Rhinebeck. And Clinton. How would you guys like to do it?
I think -- I think we ought to give each applicant an opportunity to speak to us, and maybe limit the time.
We can't -- can we meet with applicants in executive session? I don't think so.
Well, we could do public statements. There's nothing wrong with that.
And if we have questions, ask the question.
Yeah.
We could.
It'd be really uneasy voting either for or against somebody who might never seen. Of course, I know three of the candidates voted so far, but not four. But I could be wrong. You're all more experienced than I am, I guess, so please.
I'm going to call Bob Freeman and ask about meeting to interview. How we have to do that? And if not, we can do, you know, twos and twos. And I can meet with people separately, or, you know, there are.
It makes it hard.
Well, it's not hard. It's what we have to -- we have a certain amount of time, so that's what we use. It's easy. It's actually makes it easier.
Not hard, it's just 30 days.
And I think that it's a personnel issue. I don't think we have to publish whose -- or should we maybe talk about who's applying? Let me find all of this out. I'm on Freeman's.
One question. Did we find out whether it was calendar days or workdays?
We're going by calendar days, so we are calling this meeting before the 14th.
Yep.
Which is 20 days.
Gotcha.
So this person will have to be appointed before the 14th.
Well, that's a day.
There you go. Okay, so I'll get back to you with the dates. Does anybody else have any announcements from any of your liaison reports? I have -- I'll let everybody know that Tops is going into bankruptcy, and as part of that, they're looking at some kind of tax relief. So our assessor and our tertiary attorney will be meeting with Tops to discuss tax rate for town, village -- no, the village, the town, school. Are they going to -- they are reorganizing under bankruptcy, so I don't think they're closing, but we will be meeting with them about their tax assessment.
I question whether we could give them relief just because they're going bankrupt.
Our town, our tertiary attorney is working with our assessor.
I wanted to pass along a big compliment that Michael Tremble received during his time acting as our zoning administrator from someone who received help from him with the generator application. They were extraordinarily happy and sought me out to say that many months later. It's nice to hear.
As a pro of that, our -- we just received word from the county that my table is for an executive session discussion. Any other announcements or liaison reports? I know that Wireless Edge has been postponed.
Yes.
So thanks, we'll take that off the agenda. Is there anything you want to talk about the postponement, or you just want to?
It's a legal issue, so we have to clear.
Okay, you're going to clarify some things before we go now. Thank you.
While we have a moment, I'll just mention that although it's been very quiet, things have been happening on the LEP front with street rights. And the New York Power Authority has been out in the market, putting together materials for us all. And there was a conference call of all of the municipality devalled, which at last count, when I last heard the number, it was 11, coming up on the 30th, 31st. And after that, I'll have a lot more to report, I presume. And Redhook will be part of it. Robert McKean will be on my calls. Bumped into him having coffee. And Redhook by accident.
Were in Redhook by accident?
He was by accident.
You can't leave our town.
And he said we'll be talking at the end of the week. I said, yeah.
Great, thanks. I know you've been working hard on that. Also, I just wanted to say for the public that we did get notice that the department stated that the Amtrak fence proposal is on hold. I don't think that means we can't, you know, we'll still have to remain vigilant, because I believe they're willing us into a larger effort. So they're looking to look at the whole corridor, so maybe they'll try and fence off the whole corridor, right?
You're going to put a wall up.
In the meantime, I want to pull original deeds granting these and find out. Okay, thanks. Anybody, anything for anyone else? I will make a motion for Resolution 2019-037 for our budgets, transfers, and amendments. May I have a second? Thanks, Ed. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I will make a motion for Resolution 2019-038 for preliminary accounts payable abstract vouchers, 91 through 134A. There are 34 checks totaling $27,695.04. May I have a second? Thanks, Brennan. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. I will make a motion for Resolution 2019-039 for preliminary accounts payable abstracts, 135 through 185. 41 checks totaling $337,923.06. May I have a second? Is that Ed?
Yep.
Thank you. Is there any questions or discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Finally, I will make the motion for Resolution 2019-040 for capital projects abstracts. One check. Tyler Tech for our town library assessment, $9,676. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Chauncey. Is there any discussion or any questions? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I'd like a motion for Resolution 2019-041 for our software service contract for our town clerk's office. I'm happy to make the motion. May I have a second? Thank you, Alan. This is our usual software that we get every year, VAS, Business Automated Services.
Still being built to Barb Cunningham, I see.
Still being built to Barb Cunningham. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2019-042 for disposal of non-functioning office equipment. It's an HP LaserJet Pro M402 in the zoning office. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Brennan. May I have a second? Thank you, Alan. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. I'd like a motion for Resolution 2019-043 for Woody Dear's attended training program for the planning board.
Motion.
Thank you, Brennan. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chauncey. Are there any discussions? Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Like a motion for Resolution 2019-045 to appoint Monora Kovacs to the Conservation Advisory Board. Ed? Motion. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alan. Is there any discussion, questions? Have you met with her?
Yes, she's got a great resume. She's an attorney in land use for Case, Chauncey.
Sorry.
Case graduate, is an expert in land use law.
Shout out to Case, Chauncey. We thanks for going guns on this, Ed. Thank you.
We skipped the?
You skipped the.
I will finish this and go back.
Just stress this.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. And going back to Resolution, ask for a motion for Resolution 2019-044 for a contract renewal with information technology vendor. May I have a motion? Thank you, Alan. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chauncey. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, this is basically a continuation of the contract we currently have with the same rates and the same fees and the same.
Just a different year.
Yeah. They said that because we're planning to replace the servers, that it'll be easier, therefore we won't be subject to their usual increase.
We're replacing the servers because even though that tech grant seems like yesterday, they are now obsolete.
And they're out of warranty.
There you go. Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
I should add that the reason they're obsolete is that the Windows software that runs or the operating system runs on it is no longer supported.
There you go.
So it's planned obsolete.
Resolution 2019-046. May I have a motion?
Motion.
May I have a second? These are the people who used our town hall for CSA last year. Aye. Any discussions, anybody? Who put this on? I -- this is a group from Hudson, New York. I know it's CSA, I just -- I don't know how to say that.
See, and I'll argue the same thing I did last year. I think it offers a service to our residents. But I mean, I don't feel super strongly. I know that's the reason why we supported it last year.
Are we hiring -- are they going to hire someone to pick up the chairs?
I didn't make them -- I didn't make.
Say, I mean, on the thing, it says that they're going to put the chairs back.
I think probably our clerks, or maybe I said put it on.
They weren't -- were they -- was it problematic last year? No.
Were in tear?
No, I know, it is. Were in tear.
Does anybody want to contact them? Do we want them to hire Bobby to pick up the chairs? Do they have insurance? Do they have insurance?
What day are they doing all this? I'm happy to reach out to them if we have questions.
March 30th.
Great, so why don't we do, you have insurance, chairs? You know what I think I'll do before I?
It says that they agree to identify and apologize to town of Rhinebeck for any and all kinds of injures of personal injury, and that they agree to clean up town hall after event, including putting all the furniture back and removing all the trash from town hall.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that they're, you know.
You want to make sure that they're doing this.
People pick up our chairs all the time and drag them across and knock off tiles. I just wanted to make sure.
Why don't I also reach out to Bobby and ask him if he remembers what condition they left things in last year. I don't remember there being a problem with it, but like Bobby's the one who would have noticed, I assume, so I'll.
Right, well, yeah.
Sure, okay, yeah, would you? And then let me know if we need to.
So we're table, table it. Resolution 2019-047, contract, I'll make a motion for the Duchess County Sheriff's Services. May I have a second? Second? Thank you. If we want to hire them, this is their contract with them.
Any questions, please, Elizabeth?
Yeah.
What happens in an emergency situation? That doesn't seem to be covered. Is there another procedure?
In an emergency situation, the calls go. The calls go where they're going to go. They get dispatched and it's taken care of.
They just come.
If we need them, if we need to hire them, this is what we are agreeing to pay.
Right, okay.
Any further discussion or?
Well, I have a question. Do we hire them at all in the last year? I think so. Somewhat.
We hope it's theoretical.
Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2019-049, summer 2019 recreation program hires. May I have a motion? Oh, I skipped over another one. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? This is hiring a grown-up to be our park and pool manager, but I'm not sure what parks mean. Why park and pool?
Basically to oversee all the operations at the park.
What are we hiring our rep director for?
To manage recreation.
So which parks are we talking about?
The Thompson Massey Park. She's going to be -- Christine will be there.
Christine.
It is Chrissy I was going to ask.
Yeah, Chrissy. She'll be at the park overseeing the lifeguards, the.
So it's our summer park. It's not all parks.
It's not all parks, yeah.
This is our summer camp, our summer park and pool. So this is part of our discussion about hiring a grown-up to make sure things get done.
Exactly.
We don't have funding for this. Was there any discussion of that in the REC committee?
No.
This was beyond our, what we funded.
Yes.
And I don't think it's unreasonable, but I don't know how many, how many weeks are we talking about?
Well, the camp is six weeks, so it's probably just for the six weeks.
But the pools open for longer than that.
I don't think those hours would apply when there's no camp.
Well, why? The pool still needs to be managed.
It was a problem.
It was a disaster this year. It was a.
So it's, okay.
It was bumpy.
The pool's open from Memorial Day to Labor Day.
Right.
I don't want to let Alan do the math, not me. I'm going to let you do it. I was trying to do the math.
I'm totally in favor of this. I would like more information. Let's table this. I mean, I agree, we need a grown-up managing this. I want to know.
And Christie is going to be.
Chrissy.
Excuse me, is going to be there as the health director, in other words, emergency.
She's the captain of the EMS. She runs an amazing.
It's, no, she's also listed to hire.
She's formidable. She would be fantastic. I'm glad she wants to do it. I just would like some more information. All right? Can we table it?
Sure.
Thank you. I'm sorry, what else did we table?
Number 12.
Thank you, thank you. No, the, oh, number 10.
No, you did 10.
10.
Yeah, we tabled.
10. All right, I got it. Resolution 2019-048, hire of our cemetery administrator.
I'll check that out.
May I have a motion?
Motion.
May I have a second? Thank you, Ed.
What this is about is the cemetery committee has been doing work, particularly the chairman, Suzanne Kelly, has been doing work that really is the responsibility of the town, not the responsibility of the committee. And number one, number two is she basically is unwilling to continue doing the work that she's been doing.
She doesn't want to work for free.
Yes, that's right. So we've looked at what her responsibilities would be. I've circulated a job description. And basically what this would be is hours not to exceed 15 hours a week. She would work out of cemetery office.
Not totally.
And it would be up to 15 hours a week.
But not out of the office.
Not necessarily in the office. She's going to establish some office hours. The rest of the time, she'd be working out of her home, or she'd be.
I wish we had attached the job description with it.
I know.
We could, I'd like to put that on our website, and I just think we need it for a discussion.
I can't hear you.
They need the latest version on it.
Oh.
We don't have to do that now.
Okay.
I would like to have it on our next agenda to discuss it. I'm in favor of this. I've met with Suzanne. I've met with Alan with Suzanne. I've met with, what's her name? Ed, I've met Suzanne.
She's enjoyed a lot of work.
Well, it's not only that. It's as we change our model of what we're doing with the cemetery, as Gary requires, I believe that the way we structure this will change, and I believe it will be more administrative, and the labor can be done in another way. I would really like to see everything online, all of our plots. And we can also raise the fees for cemetery plots to cover this very small, nearly, fee. It doesn't come to that much. And we have a brisk sales there with the green burial ground. We're on the charts. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. I'd like the job description and her schedule upon as a discussion item for the next meeting. John?
You're going to take care of this schedule, and I'll get you the job description. Yeah, well, when's you going to have office hours?
Thanks, guys. Tab 14, Resolution 2019-050. I will make a motion for a letter in support of Drinking Water Source Water Protection Program Grant Application. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Brennan. This is part of the Hudson River Drinking Water Council that Mary and I started with the Hudson Seven, the seven communities that get their drinking water from the Hudson River. The town of Asofas is lead on this, and we are actually going for grants. There are millions of dollars in state grants for source water protection. And together, you know, when we apply for these together, we are eligible for a lot more money. So that's what this is. It costs us nothing, it just says that we are going to participate in the grant program. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. John, we can make sure that you get this out to Riverkeeper Rebecca Martin, Jan Schatley. I have a couple pieces of new business. Two pieces, actually. I'd like to reappoint our zoning review committee. And Chauncey, I was hoping you could work with me on that. So myself and Chauncey, Michael Tremble, Melanie Moore, Catherine Clark from the Zoning Order Appeals, Warren Ruplansky, Jim Levy, who's our new planner, planning for places, and John Lyons.[1778.66] This is the committee that, uh, looks at all changes we need to make to the zoning law. Before we bring it to you, we have a long list of things that we wanna look at, including barrage being, accessory structure, uh, again, more definitions, um, I will create a list and get it to you guys, and we'll be stuck that we'll be looking at, so, um, I'm creating that committee. I just wanted to... I don't need a vote, I, I don't, we don't need a board, we're, I can just create a committee, okay? Thank you. Also, um, I got an email today from Captain Harold Latardo from the, um, New York State Police in Albany. They, um, rent their troupia barracks on, on, on Montevideo, a tru, a barack here, and they'd like to remain in Lineback. I think it's really beneficial to have the state police in our town. They are looking, uh, for us to donate a piece of land for them so that they can build. We have land to donate, we own about twelve parcels of land. Um, some of them were given to us in lieu of recreation fees. Uh, any donation of land will have to go through state legislator approval, and we'll have to get our attorney involved. But I'm strongly, um, in favor of looking into this. I think for a town and village like Lineback, having a state police here is incredibly beneficial.
They need to be on the main-ish road, correct?
We have a piece of land on Route nine G, uh, that is five acres, they need about three acres. And I, you know, we'll go over the inventory with him, it's something we'll have to get Warren involved with, they've done it actively with, um, Chatham, I think, and Osning, and, you know, so that's something that is done, they're, uh, they're, um, well versed in bringing it to the, to the state for approval, and I'd like to recommend that we, you know, at least look into this. I don't, I don't wanna lose them, we don't consider it they'll go elsewhere, and I think that they're a good presence to have, we're a very popular growing town, and they're an amazing...
They're the best.
Yeah.
Chauncey?
I will, sure.
Okay, so I'll...
I've been bobbing my head, but...
Tell your face that you're off.
Let the captain know that we're in favor of this, um, I'll go over the inventory of land with him, um, basically what he said was, uh, it was a pleasure speaking to you this afternoon, as I mentioned on our call, the New York State Police is seeking to build new barracks and would like to remain in the town of Lineback. To that end, we are requesting the town consider a proposal to convey three acres of land to our agency for this purpose. We are really willing to meet with you and town representatives to discuss this initiative in more detail, um, kindly advise that this project is something the town is interested in, I will advise him yes, and I'll set up a meeting.
I'm happy to help.
I'm sorry? I don't know.
And who owns that? That's what I was about to ask, we don't know, okay.
Get a parcel access in Lineback.
Yes, in a moment.
Let's see, I have that, and... The only other thing is...
Will you move it in?
The only other thing is, um, we have this proposed local law workforce housing executive summary that Chauncey's been working on so diligently, um, and we wanna make it public, so I wanted to talk to you about that. Do you wanna tell us what it is a little bit?
You may recall a couple of meetings ago when we, I think when we scheduled the hearing for February eleventh, the workforce housing law, I suggested that we ask Art Brod to prepare an executive summary, make it easier for everybody to understand what's going on. He's done that, we've received it, uh, Warren Ruplansky has read it, thinks it's perfect and do I, and I think we're ready to make it available to the people who will wanna know more about what we're doing and will find it tough to go through the law itself. This is very tough.
Are you okay with me posting it on our Facebook page and having it posted on our, our website?
Yes.
Great. And thanks for doing all this work, I know we'll have public hearings, and I know that the planning board has another, uh, way that they want us to consider it, so it looks like we still have more discussion to do.
Yes.
Thanks for, uh...
And then we'll, we'll be, uh, continuing hearing on the eleventh because we've gotten comments from the county that will deal with, so we won't be voting on it that night.
Is Art Brod not continuing on this anymore?
No, he's, he's, in addition to doing the executive summary, he is planning to be here on the eleventh.
Oh, good.
We've asked him to be here, uh, and Warren will be here, but he has a really tight schedule ahead, so we, if he's here at six, we need to do it first, and if he's not here, he'll be trying to get here from something he can't adjourn.
I was told today that Art Brod wasn't doing this anymore.
I'm sorry, say again?
I was told today that Art Brod would, had said that he wasn't continuing. That's not so?
It's certainly not so as far as the workforce housing law is concerned, he did prepare the executive summary, I just got it, and I know he's planning to be here on the eleventh.
All right, I'll, I'll talk to you about it.
So there may be something else that somebody has in mind that he's not working on, I think that's true.
Okay. Thank you for doing all this.
You're welcome.
And, um, we have the public hearing for the workforce housing and for rookies on the, uh...
What's rookies at night?
I'd like to make a motion to go to executive session to discuss, uh, let me see, um, hold The employment of a particular person. Matters, matters regarding the employment of a particular employee.